Good afternoon. My name is Chris Leek and I'm the Chair of the City County Planning Board. I now call to order the October 8, 2020 meeting, which will be conducted remotely. Due to the state of emergency, all planning board members are participating remotely. I will now ask our Planning Director, Aaron King, to call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. George Bryan?
Here.
Melinda Donegan?
Here.
Jason Grobs?
Here.
Tommy Hicks?
Here.
Clarence Lamb?
Here.
Chris Leek?
Here.
Bo McCray?
Here.
Brenda Smith?
Here.
Jack Stillman?
Here.
All right.
Thank you. When there is a vote, a roll call will be conducted. Each board member will be recognized and asked to clearly state their vote for the record. All guests participating in this remote meeting, either through Zoom or by phone, will remain muted until recognized by the board for comment. Today's meeting is being broadcasted live on TV 13 and is also being livestreamed on the city's website. The meeting will also be replayed on TV 13 tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m. and Sunday at 4:00 p.m. Our first order of business today will be the consent agenda. These are items of which the petitioner is requesting withdrawal or continuance, or items for which staff has recommended approval and no one has signed up to speak in opposition. For our public hearings today, each side will have a total of 12 minutes. There is no rebuttal period. Once you have been recognized by the board, staff will unmute your microphone so that you can provide your comments. After the public hearing is closed and the board goes into work session, no one is permitted to speak unless the planning board asks them a question. The items under Section B of our agenda will require final action by the elected body, either the City Council or County Commissioners. As such, votes taken today are recommendations which are considered by the City Council or Board of Commissioners during this review of the requests. For special use district zoning requests, the petitioner must identify the intended use or uses of the site and give specific details on how the site will be developed. If you are addressing the board today, we would ask that before you begin your comments, please give us your name, address, and zip code for the record. Our first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the September 10th meeting. September 24th work session minutes are still being prepared. Are there any additions or corrections to the September 10th meeting minutes? Is there a motion?
Move approval, Clarence.
Motion by Mr. Lamb?
Second, Jason Grobs.
Second by Mr. Grobs. Any further discussion? Mr. King, would you please call the roll?
Yes, George Bryan? Yes. Melinda Donegan?
Yes.
Jason Grobs?
Yes.
Tommy Hicks?
Yes.
Clarence Lamb?
Yes.
Chris Leek?
Yes.
Bo McCray?
Yes.
Brenda Smith?
Yes.
Jack Stillman?
Yes.
That's unanimous.
Thank you. I'm not going to recognize Mr. Desmond Corley for the consent agenda.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could just make one other comment, I do want to point out one correction. And it's not in your minutes, it's in the results page of your agenda book. It was the results from City Council meeting, I think it was the Gord Manor Storage Building case. I think in there we incorrectly said planning board and staff recommended approval. That should be planning staff recommended approval and planning board sent that forward with no recommendation with a four to four vote. Jack caught that and I want to clarify that for the record, make sure that's that's clear for everybody. So that was an oversight on our part and we'll get that corrected moving forward.
So approve with said correction. Mr. Corley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can everybody hear me and see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so we have some opposition for case B1, which is at 1597. So that that item will be taken from the consent agenda. And then I will start with B2 and 3, which are continued cases to the November hearing, I'm sorry. B2 is W3448, that one is continued to November 12th so that the petitioner can meet the requirements for community outreach. And then the same is true for W3455, which is B3. So those are all the public hearing items on the consent agenda. The next item on the consent agenda is C1, which is PBR 2020-073R Mobile Home Park. This is an expansion of an existing manufactured housing development on 22.27 acres northwest of the end or the cul-de-sac of Rainwood Court. Excuse me, this is a site plan of the proposed extension. Essentially, the UDO allows expansions of existing manufactured housing developments as long as they comply with the current UDO standards, which speak specifically to expansions. This proposed expansion shows a connection to a public street adjacent to the property as well as required buffy yards around the perimeter of the expansion. Staff recommends approval of this request as it meets UDO requirements.
Mr. Chairman, this is Clarence. I move approval.
All right. Thank you. That's a motion by Mr. Lamb, is there a second?
Yes, second?
Second by Mr. Stillman. Any further discussion? If not, Mr. King, would you please call the roll?
Question, question, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Bryan, yes, sir?
Yeah, in the in the notes of this, we were, they were talking about a second entrance or exit with this. Is that showing here? Could you show me that, Desmond?
Sure. Are you able to follow my mouse cursor?
Yes.
Let's say yes.
Okay, so there the primary existing entrance to 3R Mobile Home Park is on Jones Road.
Right.
Just to the left of your screen, this is the existing entrance. The new entrance is going to be created off Rainwood Court, which is up here, kind of the top right corner of the site plan on your screen. So this is an existing street with a cul-de-sac. This expansion is going to connect from the existing Tea Tree Lane, which is the entrance off of Jones Road, and go through and connect to that cul-de-sac on Rainwood Court.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, previous motion is second, are we on the floor? Mr. King, if there are no other questions or comments, could you please call the roll?
Yes, George Bryan?
Yes.
Melinda Donegan?
Yes.
Jason Grobs?
Yes.
Tommy Hicks?
Yes.
Clarence Lamb?
Yes.
Chris Leek?
Yes.
Bo McCray?
Yes.
Brenda Smith?
Yes.
Jack Stillman?
Yes.
That's eight to zero.
All right, the next item on the consent agenda is C2, which is PBR 2020-08. This is a PRD called Harper Glen. The PRD has 108 lots on 33 acres west of Everett Road and Farm Bill Court. Here's the site plan and proposed PRD. It includes the requisite amount of active open space. If you all recall, the city and county recently adopted changes to the specific standards for PRDs. It includes a greenway easement along South Fork, Muddy Creek, and an internal walking trail for the enjoyment of residence. Because it meets all of the new standards for PRDs, staff recommends approval of this request.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is Clarence. Move approval.
That's motion by Mr. Lamb? Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Second by Mr. Stillman. Any further discussion? Now, Mr. King, will you please call the roll?
I may ask just one follow-up question?
Yes, sir.
Um, what is the, where is this site in relation to the relatively new school in that area off of Everett Street? I believe it's called Flat Rock School?
Mr. Stillman, I believe the school, if you follow my cursor, is on the north side of the creek.
Okay.
So yeah, just on the other side at the top of this plan.
Excellent. They're where it says City of Winston-Salem, Blaine Board of Education?
Yes.
At the adjacent property owners. That's what I thought, thank you very much.
All right, Mr. King, I think there are no further questions, you can call the roll now.
Okay, George Bryan?
Yes.
Melinda Donegan?
Yes.
Jason Grobs?
Yes.
Tommy Hicks?
Yes.
Clarence Lamb?
Yes.
Chris Leek?
Yes.
Bo McCray?
Yeah.
Brenda Smith?
Yes.
Jack Stillman?
Yes.
All right, that's eight to zero.
All right, the last item on the consent agenda is C3, which is PBR 2020-08, a development called Duarte and Castro. This is a paired parcel average density development of total 5.94 acres east of Petticore Park Road, which is one of the parcels up here highlighted in yellow, and west of Petticore Road, or Petticore Road down here, just off of Hastings Hill Road. The UDO allows the use of two non-contiguous parcels for compliance with its watershed regulations. Those two parcels have to be submitted as a single development project. And this particular development would have an approval condition requiring a conservation easement on the portion of the second parcel, which is the one off Hastings Hill Road, being used for the pair parcel average density development. Again, that's the second parcel off of Hastings Hill Road. So there is a convergence of two streams kind of in the southeastern corner of this parcel. They're proposing to use a portion of this parcel, place it in a conservation easement, submit both of these parcels as a single development proposal to meet the watershed regulation standards. Staff recommended approval of this request.
Mr. Chairman, this is Clarence. Move approval.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb, this motion by Mr. Lamb, is there a second?
Second, Jason Grobs.
Thank you, Mr. Grobs. Second, are there any, is any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry, go ahead, Jack.
No, after you, Clarence, excuse me.
I just wanted to know, the the ease, the conservation easement restriction is actually a recorded document, right? So that appears in the chain of title, okay?
And as a related matter to that, who is the the recipient of the easement going forward?
It should be the developer who is intending to use the parcels as average density development. So that would be the person who shows up as the owner or agent in the report, Duarte and Castro LLC.
I believe we have Mr. Duarte here and we also have Randall Kell and Bob Richardson along for any questions.
Is there anyone that have have any questions for the developer at all? Are you satisfied with the answer received?
Yes.
All right, so thank you so much. All right, any further discussion? All right, Mr. King, would you please call the roll?
Yes, George Bryan?
Yes.
Melinda Donegan?
Yes.
Jason Grobs?
Yes.
Tommy Hicks?
Yes.
Clarence Lamb?
Yes.
Chris Leek?
Yes.
Bo McCray?
Yes.
Brenda Smith?
Yes.
Jack Stillman?
Yes.
All right, that's eight to zero. And I believe that concludes our consent agenda and will bring us back to item number B1 on your agenda, which is zoning case F1597. And as Desmond alluded to earlier, I know we have some speakers here for this one. So Gary Roberts, I believe, is going to make the staff presentation on this one, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Oh wait, too, my show is brought up. This item is zoning docket F1597 and the petitioner is EM Airs, EM Light Airs. The site is 97.01 acres located on the north side of Van Hoye Road and west of Happy Hill Road, which is located in Guilford County. And it is a special use rezoning request from AG Agricultural to RS40 Special Use District. This is Legacy's growth management plan. As you know, the county is divided into five levels of five growth management areas based upon the level of urban services in those areas. And so this is within the darker green area, the rural growth management area, where typically there is no sewer provided. Sometimes there is water provided. In this case, there is water, public water from Stokesdale will be provided to this site. So you can see it's located in the northeastern portion of the county, just south of Highway 158. Legacy does discourage generally in growth management area five rezonies to more intense zoning districts. Also, typically in a presentation, I would show you an image later on of an area plan. But generally in the growth management area five, we don't have specific lot-specific area plans. However, in 2012, the staff did prepare the northeast rural area study plan for the county commissioners, that was not adopted, but it was prepared for them. And one of the recommendations that came out of that was to evaluate carefully any package, community, waste treatment, waste treatment, package plants. And this request does not include a package treatment plant. So I just wanted to mention that it is generally consistent from that perspective of the plan. This is a zoning map showing the subject property there, that dark red line that goes through the middle, that is the county line, Guilford County, Forsyth County line. Everything to the left is within Forsyth County and to the right is Guilford County. Subject property there is in yellow, it's 97 acres in size, it's currently undeveloped. It has extensive frontage along Blues Lake, the southern portion of Blues Lake. You can see Reevesville Road, Highway 158 there in the upper left portion of this image. All of the subject property and most of the surrounding property is zoned agricultural as well. You can see a little bit of RS40 there in the upper left. Really, if we were to take a broader image of this whole portion of the county, there's several neighborhoods in this area that are zoned either RS40, RS40S, and even some RS30. So the request is really not that significantly inconsistent with the development pattern in that area. I'll just mention generally the main difference between AG and RS40, obviously, RS40 does not allow the agricultural type uses. The lot size is the same, both are 40,000 square feet. The only real distinction is a dimensional distinction. And the AG requires new residential lots to be 150 feet in width, whereas AG backs that down to just 100 feet in width. Thank you. This is an aerial image showing the subject property there again, same same scale. I just wanted to point out the the access points will be from to the east in Guilford County. Part of this development goes over and connects to Happy Hill Road, you can see that. Happy Hill goes northward and connects to Reevesville Road, eventually goes down and connects with Benefit Church Road in Forsyth County, which connects to Pine Grove Road. The second access will be in Bent Ridge Forest Drive. You can see I've got an orange arrow that points to that. That exists, that's a fairly new development there with public streets that stub into this this property. Couple of images taken on site, this is off-site, this is about 1,300 feet south of the subject property at the convergence of Van Hoye and Bent Ridge Forest Drive. Van Hoye is to the left. This portion of it here is publicly maintained, just beyond that, it converts to a private street. And to the right is Bent Bent Ridge Forest Drive. And this image is not very revealing, but that's the on-site sign there, the property again is is undeveloped. So this is a site plan, it's oriented a little bit differently. Those other images, you had north at the top of your screen, so this is rotated, so north is to the right. You can see again on the right side, I've got Guilford County and Forsyth County labeled there. So everything that's within Guilford County is shaded out. The total development, they're proposing about 109 lots. 88 of those on the on the upper portion of that are within Forsyth County, either all or a portion of those. 88 lots are are within Forsyth County. At the bottom of the image, you see the connection there, the Happy Hill Road. And then to the left, Bent Ford, Bent Ford, Bent Ridge Forest Drive is to the left, that will be the other public street connection. And these will be public streets. This is a conventional subdivision. It's a straight subdivision, it's not a planned residential development. So all lots have to meet that 100-foot width and 40,000-square-foot lot size. There will be public water provided to that. Your your staff report had individual wells, but the revised plan does show the use of Stokesdale Public Water. They will have individual septic systems, but there is about a nine-acre track. If you look to the left of the screen, there's a knoll there and that's actually on the southern end of the site. And that is dedicated for common open space, but also some off-site septic use. But there is no no package plant proposed. Staff looked at a potential stub to the south, but because the development pattern is not really, that was not really an option. So it's actually a little bit less lots than theoretically could take place under the current zoning. And the plan does meet UDO ordinance requirements. So in summary, the request is for fewer lots and could be theoretically approved under the current AG zoning. Of course, that would, that's a, we would have to take an evaluation of a plan, should that be submitted. Such a development may be, may end up being a PRD to to get that maximum zoning density under the current zoning, but that is a theoretical possibility there. Also, multiple RS40 zone lots, neighborhoods exist within this portion of Forsyth County, as I mentioned earlier. And the request complies with the RS40 district purpose statement. It does not propose to extend public sewer into the growth management area five. And the site is not located within a water supply watershed. So staff's recommendation is for approval. And I will be glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Roberts, the portion of the developments in Guilford County, what do we know what the zoning of that is currently?
It is zoned AG as well.
Okay. And I mean, I know it's beyond the scope of what we're doing here, but is there a pending rezoning in Guilford County as well?
I I assume so, but I could not answer that, so I'd have to defer to the developer.
Mr. Roberts, could you explain a little bit more how this public septic area works?
So again, that's about nine acres on the southern end of this site. I don't know if we have which specific lots would use that. I I would probably have to defer to the developer on that. Again, that's that would, the final approval would have to be from the Forsyth County Health Department.
So the thought is that certain houses would pump to that area?
That's correct.
And then what are the considerations about septic and and overflow or or seepage into Blues Creek? Is is that all controlled by public health?
Yes, I really could not elaborate on that anymore, George.
We have Norris Clayton and Greg Garrett here to answer some questions also.
Thank you, Samuel.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions for staff before I open the public hearing?
Yeah, I had one, Mr. Chairman. It's really just, you had, you included a boundary map and I was just curious about whether the lots, how far they went down in terms of the, when they reached the lake. Do they go all the way to the lake or is there some kind of a buffer that Blues, that Duke Power owns?
It loo, it looks like generally the lot lines, the actual private property goes along the the border of the floodplain, the 100-year floodplain. And the rest, I guess that varies, maybe five, 10, 20 feet, depends upon the topography, is within the control of Duke Energy. I think if we go to the site plan, it maybe shows it just a little bit, a little bit clearer.
Desmond, if you can go back to that area, I think that gives you a little bit of an idea because it shows you kind of where that property line boundary stops. And there's some additional land between sort of that boundary line and full pond level.
Yeah, that was my question was was when I saw that map, I I wanted to just clarify that, thank you.
And and just one, one more question, please. Would the, would the children of occupants of houses in Guilford County attend Guilford County schools in the same form the other side of the line for Forsyth County?
Generally, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Can be some neighborhood rivalries.
All right, so if no additional questions for staff, I'm going to open the public hearing. Mr. King, I'm going to turn it over to you for anyone that we have here to speak on this case.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So so we do have some speakers for this case and as we always do, we'll begin with the proponents. We have two folks that are signed up in support of this request. It looks like Norris Clayton and Greg Garrett are the two folks here in support. So so gentlemen, I will let you determine who goes first, but whoever wants to speak, please go ahead. Unmute yourself, provide your name and address for the record and begin your remarks.
And zip code, please.
Yes.
Okay, good afternoon. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, my name's Greg Garrett. My address is 6420 Hampton Knoll Road, that's in Clemens 27012. Good evening, I'm a, I'm the developer for this project. The applicant is RS Parker Homes, of which I'm a partner with this development group. I'm also representing the Mary M. Light Estate. And they have approached us about purchasing their property and felt that the highest and best use for the property was for residential development, particularly given the fact of its extensive frontage along Blues Lake. We're real excited about this project. You know, the particulars have kind of already been presented by the staff, but just to highlight, we're talking about 127, 127 acres total, you're just looking at 90 some odd acres, it's in Forsyth County. But there is a little over 30 some odd acres in in Oak Ridge's jurisdiction. And then we have a deeded access easement through a Duke Energy parcel that adjoins Happy Hills Road. And that is actually in Stokesdale's jurisdiction. So I think one of the questions that the board had was where are we in that process? As of last week, the Oak Ridge Town Council approved our RS40 request for the Oak Ridge portion of of this project. And then the Stokesdale is requiring us to also rezone the track that we have the access easement through. And so we are in 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 process of going through that rezoning. That's only required just because in order to build a publicly dedicated road, they say it must be in a RS40 district. So so yeah, so I'm going through three different jurisdictions to pull off this overall project of, you know, 127 acres. Ordinarily, I don't think I would go through that that amount of effort. But this is just a rare, rare, rare site that we're real excited about developing. Have spent the past several weeks just immersing myself in the the community there. I've personally called every adjoining property owner around the entire perimeter of the 127 acres and 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 for the most part have spoken just about every one of those. There there are a handful that had trouble reaching and left voicemail messages on phone numbers that I'm not certain were were accurate. But in any event, the effort has been there. I've also spent time driving around the the local roads and have had chances to speak with residents that way, just being out out in the in the community. And all in all, I feel like it's it's been, you know, fairly well-received. I mean, as much as you can receive, you know, change, you know, there's definitely going to be change that takes place. But once the folks found out that we had, we're going to have public water, that alleviated the concern of wells running dry. the concern of wells running dry, so that was helpful. There's also a need for more infrastructure out this way. They do not have high-speed internet out on Happy Hill Road or at Bent Ridge Forest. And so they were very excited to hear about that coming spectrum. Been talking to Spectrum, and they're already gearing up to, to service this development should you guys, you know, give it approval. You know, the home sites are, I believe, consistent with other subdivisions in this area. You know, property values will, will certainly be, be, you know, above average with this development, particularly with all of the lots that are joining the Duke Energy right-of-way. So to answer that question, yeah, we, we don't go right up to the shore. There's actually very defined markers of what control Duke Energy has, and so our, our boundary survey takes that into consideration. So, and of course, there's a lot of restrictions. It's not like each one of these home sites will have docks on the lake. I mean, that, that is pretty well prohibited, and under certain special circumstances, you might be able to get it. But it's, it's, it's not anything we're counting on. If, if, if anything, maybe a community dock, but again, you know, that, that is, that's something that is, requires a lot of, a lot of, a lot of effort and going through a lot of processes to get to. So we're moving forward, knowing that that, that, that is a restriction that will, will be in play. You know, I, I really, really like this project, and, you know, we just asked the board to, to look at it, to look at the, you know, the, the neighboring subdivisions that have popped up over the years. Believe there's even a case a couple of months ago that, that's similar to this, that had some lake frontage, and would just ask that you would, you know, agree with the, with your staff and, 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 and all the different plans that seem to have led to their conclusion and, and vote in favor of this project this evening. I'm also joined by Norris Clayton. He's my civil engineer, and he can answer any of your technical questions. As a matter of fact, I know some, some, some of the comments were about that big, large open space area for the off-site septic areas. And his firm is very familiar with that process. I mean, it's not something new to Forsyth County or Guilford County. You know, there, there are lots of developments done like this, and it, it's typically just an area where, when you have lots that don't perk, then they would pump, pump to this, this big, large area and have a defined area there, which would be where their drain lines would go for their septic system. Happy to answer any questions you guys might have.
Mr. Chairman, and Greg, if that's the end of your remarks, it looks like we've got about five minutes left. If Mr. Clayton would like to say anything, I think though you guys are the only folks signed up as proponents, so there's about five minutes left for Mr. Clayton if he would like to speak.
Okay, yes. My name's Norris Clayton. I'm with Hugh Creed Associates Engineers, 1306 West Windover Avenue in Greensboro, 27408. We're the design engineers for the site. Laid it out in RS40 zoning. It laid out pretty nicely for that, those big lots, because the topography is pretty steep. And, but we did do a preliminary soils valuation on the site, and there are a lot of good perk areas on the site, so the large lots, hopefully, most of them will have perk sites, but there is, any offsite should be put in that large nine-acre site. And there'll be an individual pump and force main from the lot that leads the septic up to that site. And they would have a remote lot to itself up there. Got any other questions about the site? I'd be glad to answer.
Mr. King, how much time is left for proponents, just in case?
Sorry, I was on mute. Four minutes.
All right. Would anyone else like to speak in support of this?
Mr. Chairman, I think those are our only two speakers in support. So if you're ready to make the transition, we can now turn to the opponents. I believe we've got three speakers signed up. We've kind of got two folks. We've got a Dr. Taylor, a Christine Riles, and a Maureen Murray. So let's go in that order. Let's begin with Dr. Taylor. If you're with us, please go ahead and unmute yourself, provide your name, address, and zip code for the record, and begin your remarks.
As a reminder, this side will also have 12 minutes to.
Okay, this is Art Taylor. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
My address is 8731 Van Hoy, and it's Kernersville address. I have 20 acres alongside Van Hoy, portion of it in, in Forsyth and a portion in Guilford. My main purpose here is, is the little place, it's called Little Hat Ranch. I, I do benefits for kids. I have a little cowboy camp for kids, and we do benefits for, and send money to children's hospitals, Brenner's and St. Jude's, for instance. My main concern, and what I'm opposed to, is the connection between Brentwood and the development. What that's going to do to, to this little deal that I have is cause a lot of traffic and with horses and kids and, and traffic from that development running up and down the road, I feel like it's going to be not a very good, not a very good thing at all. If, if there's any way that they can not have that connection is, it would be, it would be great for this, for this little place, for what we do for the kids. And that's about all I have to say.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. And I think our next person who has signed up to speak in opposition is Christine Riles. Christine, if you're with us, please unmute yourself, give your name, address, and zip code for the record, and begin your remarks.
Hey, this is Christine Riles. My address is 8788 Van Hoy Road. The zip code is 27284. I believe each of you already have in your file something I had submitted earlier to Gary Roberts about some concerns. One is the lot size, and although I'm listening to what's going on today, I'm a little even more confused than what I was. I, I knew we were requesting AG to residential 40, but I thought that the lot sizes, there was an additional request to reduce the lot size from 150 feet to 100 feet, and that was something I wanted the board to reconsider. This is a rural area, and by definition, rural means larger lot sizes. Even though some of the subdivisions that are being approved in other areas might have smaller ones, people move to a rural area because of the type of lifestyle it is, and cramming a lot of houses into one space changes that as it is. So that would be my one consideration. When Doc was talking about the traffic, that's another huge issue for me, is just the additional traffic. When we thought they were coming in off of Happy Hill Road, it wasn't such a big deal. But now, because you're looking at two different counties, and when Guilford County went to pay Van Hoy and tried to get Forsyth County to work on their end of Van Hoy, it didn't work real well. And this is in the last 10 years, I guess. Not sure. Excuse me? I'm sorry?
We still can hear you.
You can or cannot hear me?
We can. It sounds like you're getting a little bit of feedback off yourself.
Okay. All right. Did you hear the part about the lot sizes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. All right, let's go to the traffic then. All right. Most of the traffic, it looks like, is going to be coming from Forsyth onto Guilford. Have you guys talked to Guilford County? What's going to be the road? What is being done to control the traffic? This is a rural road, no lines, no nothing. And I was thinking of Doc and his farm and stating, well, if we can't cut off the existence of the traffic using Van Hoy, could we at least put speed bumps up there? That was one of his suggestions, that then might control some of the traffic. But I think the two counties need to talk to one another to see how they're going to work to get this done, because the houses will be in Forsyth, but they'll be using Guilford County roads. And that's it. I'll leave it to Maureen now.
All right. So Maureen Murray, it looks like you are the next speaker signed up in opposition. So if you're with us, go ahead and unmute yourself and name, address, and record for, for the record, and begin your remarks.
Yes, my name is Maureen Demarest Murray, and our address on the lake is 8798 Van Hoy Road, Kernersville 27284. It is a second home for us, just in terms of mailing. That's not our mailing address, but I think for this purpose, that's what you would want to know. I don't know that I'm speaking so much in opposition, as I know that at these kinds of meetings, things can evolve, so we didn't want it to evolve differently than planned. I have spoken with Mr. Garrett earlier today and had some questions answered. Some of our primary concerns were that similar restrictions applied along the lake edge by Duke Energy to the development that applied to the rest of the homeowners like us. We are on the lakefront, and we are actually at the very tip, I guess, of the southwest corner there on the lake. So it's, if I'm looking at the site plan correctly, we are that, that lot that is closest there on that little point where the frontage is 144 feet, I believe. So we all have certain restrictions in terms of not clearcutting property and leaving certain trees that are above a certain diameter, I believe it's four inches. And Mr. Garrett said that he has those same restrictions as well by Duke Energy. We also were concerned about access and just wanted to be sure that there was not going to be construction traffic coming down the private road that extends. In one of the photographs that Mr. Roberts showed, you could partially see the gravel road that would go off to the right above the Bent Ridge Road access, and that is a private road that's maintained by homeowners. And we didn't want to have large construction traffic coming down that road, but he assured me that he didn't believe he had the right to come down that road. So I don't think that's probably an issue either. We also didn't want to see the lake, the size of the lots reduced any further, and it doesn't sound like that's in the plan. And we're pleased that they're considering public water, because that was also a concern about going dry on the wells. So I think if things stay as planned, we are not actually speaking in opposition. We just didn't want it to change from what was being proposed. And also, I've spoken to Mr. Garrett about whether there might be some trees left in terms of wooded area, and that we'll deal with him directly on that. So again, weren't quite sure how things might change, because things do, as I heard Mr. Roberts make a few changes from what we had seen earlier, just in terms of what we had read. So that's why I said at the outset that we were more medium. We just wanted to be sure it didn't deviate from what was being proposed or get any smaller. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, could I ask a question of Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Murray, I was concerned about clearcutting as I looked at the shiloh neighborhood and saw the lack of trees there. What are the general requirements by Duke in terms of trees? I don't believe in our GMA 5, we can have tree save areas, but there must be some Duke Power requirements. So what are, what are those for my information?
And I'm putting my video on. I probably should have done that when I started. What I know by memory, and I don't have it written in front of me, but is that anything over a four-inch diameter in terms of the tree trunk size is not supposed to be cut down? That exists there within the realm of the Duke Energy property access line? And I think as Mr. Garrett mentioned, that varies depending upon where your lot is. It has to do with how far, how far up they can flood your lot from the lake. So I don't think that's exactly the same for everyone, but that's the general dimension is my understanding of the.
That's just around that buffer between the property and the lake. It, it doesn't have anything to do with the property that's up the hill?
That's my understanding. And then there are also certain requirements from Duke Energy in terms of what you can and cannot do to the lake's edge in terms of whether you put stone or boarding or riffraff or, or those kinds of things, and I don't know that off the top of my head.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I believe Ms. Murray was the last speaker signed up in opposition. There are about two minutes left. If anybody has anything they didn't, they'd like to add to the record, but I think she is the last speaker signed up in opposition.
Okay. If there, are there any other comments in the last two minutes for the public hearing?
Chris, could I ask a question of Dr. Taylor?
Yes.
So, Dr. Taylor, your, your issue is with traffic coming through that one access. Do you see any other options for the developer? Because they really need, you know, two ways into this. So it, it would be traffic coming would be the answer, or what other solutions do you see?
Dr. Taylor, you can unmute by dialing star six or star nine.
How about now?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah. Well, I'm opposed to the access into, into that Brentwood area that, that connects with Van Hoy. But if it, if it passes, then I certainly would like to see some speed breakers put up at least every 100 yards. My, my property extends, well, there's 20 acres, and most of it is on that, that road there. I have a very thin property, and it's long, but I, I'm guessing maybe half a mile. I'm not sure if it's quite that long. But speed breakers would, would, would really help if they could get that done at least every 100 yards. You know, I'm also concerned about the construction trucks going in and out. Now, what happens when, when a development like that comes in is, first thing kids do when they feel like they're out in the country is they get on their motorbikes and their four-wheelers, run the roads, and then they're, they've got, they've got other, other, other people that are in hurry, in, in a hurry, and then try to use this as a shortcut. So I'm just, you know, I'm just really leery about, about the, the traffic from, from that, that, that big number of houses.
Thank you.
If no other comments or questions, I'm going to declare the public hearing closed. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, this is Clarence. I've got a question before a motion.
Yes.
And this is probably for the engineer, and I'm sorry, sir, I can't remember your name, but can you describe, I'd like to know how, in that nine-acre parcel, y'all call it open space, common area, and off-site septic area, how does that actually work? I'm thinking in terms of, if you've got, you know, you've got 20 septic fields up there. Do you, do you survey off and, and locate a limited common element that's just specific, say, to lot 38, just using lot 38 as an example? How does that work? When it comes time to repair a septic field or replace a septic field or something like that, how does that work? I guess that works, you have a declaration of common area. I'd like to know how that works just a little bit, please.
Sure. If, if a lot had, does not have sufficient soil and has to be an off-site septic system, a pump would be put on the lot, and a force main going just outside the right of way and go over to this property. And each individual lot that needs an offsite would be laid out separate for its initial and its repair site. So it'd be just like an onsite, an initial and repair system would just be offsite. And that, that would be surrounded by an easement that would be a special purpose just for that lot that it's designated to.
Okay. Do those designated initial fields and then replacement fields, do they get, do they appear on the platte or anything like that?
Yes. Well, I'm. Yes, once everything is detailed out by the health department, they would be.
Got it. I understand now. Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, if I'd like, this is Clarence. I'd like to move that the planning board find that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Thank you. This motion by Mr. Lamb, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hicks. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll note, um, okay, there he is. Jason had just texted me. His internet connection was giving him some trouble, but it looks like he is getting back in. So we may just want to give him a second um to get back in the meeting. And there he is.
All right, so we have the motion on the floor and a second. Any further discussion? Mr. King, I'll turn it over to you for the roll call, please.
Okay, George Bryan?
Yes.
Melinda Donegan?
Yes.
And Jason, this was a motion on consistency. Um, so it's your turn.
Yes.
Tommy Hicks?
Yes.
Clarence Lamb?
Yes.
Chris Leek?
Yes.
Mo McCray?
Yeah.
Brenda Smith?
Yes.
Jack Steelman?
Yes.
Okay, so the consistency vote is eight to zero.
Okay, and Mr. Chairman, this is Clarence again. I move that the planning board recommend approval of F fifteen ninety-seven.
Thank you. Approval is motion by Mr. Lamb. Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Second by Mr. Steelman. Any further discussion? Mr. King, will you please call the roll?
George Bryan?
Yes.
Melinda Donegan?
Yes.
Jason Grubbs?
Yes.
Tommy Hicks?
Yes.
Clarence Lamb?
Yes.
Chris Leek?
Yes.
Mo McCray?
Yeah.
Brenda Smith?
Yes.
Jack Steelman?
Yes.
Okay, so the recommendation is eight to zero for approval of that case. That will now go on to the county commissioners for for their consideration.
Thank you everyone for your time on that case.
And Mr. Chairman, that will bring us to um item B five on your agenda, and that is our proposed UDO text amendment dealing with um our bonus density for affordable housing and some considerations for alternative parking compliance. Um, Tiffany White on our staff briefed this for you um at your work session. So um she is prepared to make a presentation. So without further ado, can turn it over to Tiffany and let her begin.
To amend section four-point-one-point-six of the Unified Development Ordinances on Bonus Density for Affordable Housing and section six-point-one-point-five on Alternative Parking and Parking Incentives. Just a quick summary, as part of this year's work program, staff was asked to review section four-point-one-point-six of the UDO regarding bonus density for affordable housing. This has been in the UDO since its inception in nineteen ninety-four and never been used. Um, the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Housing Study and Needs Assessment, which was a report through the Community Development Department, also recommended reevaluation of this provision to see whether modifications could be made to the language to encourage greater use of this bonus density item. Staff reached out to local affordable housing developers, the Community Development Department, and the Housing Authority of Winston-Salem to review language in the provision and provide feedback. And we also researched other bonus density provisions in peer communities. A result of all of this research and outreach, um according to developers, bonus density is not an incentive for including affordable units in our local market due to several factors. And their opinion was that the real drivers to affordability were outside the scope of the UDO. They also mentioned that the land donation section that is currently in the provision would never happen um as the donation land would have to be developable. And they said they'd keep that to develop themselves so that there wouldn't be a donation um incentive there at all. The Community Development Department and HAWS found that there needed to be updates to the regulatory language um in order to keep it compliant with several federal programs that address affordable housing, specifically through HUD and some local and state programs as well. So they sent along recommendations for updated language. And planning staff also wanted the language in the provision to tie more closely to other housing programs offered through the city and county, just to keep that consistency so that developers or um community members looking into these provisions would find consistent language among the departments. Um, as part of our research into the bonus density, uh we found that another potential incentive to the inclusion of affordable units was a reduction in parking requirements. Um, parking is a huge cost, especially in multifamily developments. And anything that helped reduce the number of parking spaces would reduce the number or reduce the cost of the project overall. Um, staff looked into how to best incentivize parking reduction with without overcomplicating the permitting and evaluation process. And through all of that research and discussion, we determined that allowing parking reductions for uh multifamily developments within a quarter mile of legacy growth corridor or activity centers and within a quarter mile of a transit line would further multiple planning goals, um including locating housing near transit and services for the community and reducing overall housing costs that would um help maintain uh an affordability level within our community. So with that, um, we would recommend approval of the uh modifications to section four-point-one-point-six and section six-point-one-point-five. And I'm I'm here for questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Tiffany?
Mr. Chairman, um, I think I got most of my questions answered at the work session. I think those minutes will be coming out. But um it is, it is interesting that uh in the last few months, the affordable or more affordable units that have been developed certainly have depended on land and location, uh just as the uh the mobile home park that we just uh approved and and looked at. Um, it it seems that that is a big driver. And uh it I'm hoping that this will work in terms of some affordable. But I I still think the city needs to look harder at the other ideas that were out on the table um having to do with, you know, some kind of covenants around land or giving land or subsidizing, which I I think the developers also commented on, that there is some help that needs to be uh made. And that's where we'll see the real, the real impact on affordable housing. And hopefully, it won't be just on affordable housing. It will be mixed uh wage and and uh types of housing. Thank you.
I can, I can add to that a little bit. Um, so so, you know, the work that we are doing here, this is just one small piece of the puzzle. Our our Community Development Department, you know, the those are the folks that are really doing the heavy lifting. And I can tell you, they have got um a lot of irons in the fire with respect to ideas. There's a lot of discussion going on at the city council level. There's, there's hardly a general government committee meeting that goes by where affordable housing and strategies and ideas aren't aren't discussed. So so I just want everybody to know, like I said, this is a small piece of it, that 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 work is being done um at a, at a great scale by our community development staff. Mr. Chairman, I will remind you, this is a public hearing. We do not have anybody signed up to speak on this. So at whatever point you're comfortable, you may want to just officially um close that for the record.
All right. First, I'm going to open the public hearing. If there's no one here to speak, I'm going to close the public hearing. If there's no further discussion, Mr. King, would you want to call the roll? Well, first, we need a motion and a second.
Mr. Chairman, this is Clarence. I move that the planning board recommend approval of UDO CC seven.
That's motion by Mr. Lamb. Is there a second?
Yes, second.
That was Mr. Steelman, I think?
Uh, it can be either.
All right, all right. So second by Mr. Steel. Uh, Mr. King, will you please call the roll?
Yes, George Bryan?
Yes.
Melinda Donegan?
Yes.
Jason Grubbs?
Yes.
Tommy Hicks?
Yes.
Clarence Lamb?
Yes.
Chris Leek?
Yes.
Mo McCray?
Yeah.
Brenda Smith?
Yes.
Jack Steelman?
Yes.
Okay, that is eight to zero. And I believe that concludes all the items we have on our agenda today. And it brings us to staff report. If you're ready for that, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, we are.
All right, um, let me first turn it over to Desmond so he can give you a preview of what is in store for your November public hearing. Desmond, if you're there and can do that, that'd be great.
I am. Um, Mr. Chair and members of the board, we have, as I mentioned earlier, two cases that will continue from this hearing that will be heard at the November meeting. One of those is a site plan amendment. The other one is a limited use rezoning request. We also have one new site plan amendment request and one new, especially using limited uh rezoning request. So we'll have two of each of those next month, as well as three text amendments. Um, one that was also continuing from this month, and then two others. I think you were briefed on UDO CC uh nine, which pertains to family group home uses. Uh, we also have three preliminary subdivision approvals and three other planning board reviews. So next month will be a busy one for this group.
Thank you, Desmond. Um, looking ahead to your October work session, um, just a couple notes there is that we'll be, we will be bringing back our our remaining six-month work program for you to consider at that point. Um, in addition, we'll also be giving you a briefing on our Doral Drive, Renolda Road Plan. That is, you may remember, that is one we we started before COVID. Um, and we we resumed our efforts October twenty-ninth. We had our second. We we were doing our meetings there virtually. We did those through Zoom. Um, we did one. We offered a ten-thirty slot and a five-thirty slot. So um we kind of did those in a Zoom webinar format. So and then we also left um send another email back out to folks and saying that, you know, if you if you weren't able to attend, here's a link. You can watch it here. And if you have comments, please get them to the to us. So um uncharted waters for us, so we're we're trying to see how that works. I think the um the presentations went well. So um we bringing that back to you for a briefing at your October work session. Um, and I don't know, was anybody able to attend that by any chance? I don't know. We we I didn't recognize any of the names that came in, but just.
I meant to attend, but I had a conflict, but I did watch it online. And I have to say, I really thought it was very well done, and I'm sorry that we're more there. But I think a lot of people will be able to watch it online.
Good, good. Thank you for those comments. That's very helpful. Um, the only other thing, I I I told you this before, this is the last time you're going to hear me say the census. Um, and and no sooner than I told you that the last time. The next day, a court case came out and and extended the deadline from October the fifth to October the thirty-first. So I do think October the thirty-first is going to be the official deadline. So a- as always, this is my public plug to anybody who's watching, please complete the census if you have not already done so. It's very easy. You can go to mytwentytwentycensus.gov, um, log on there and complete it. Um, or you can call one-eight-four-four-three-three-zero-two-two-twenty-twenty, one-eight-four-four-three-three-zero-twenty-twenty, and and log on and complete the census. As of today, our self-response rate in Forsyth County is at sixty-five-point-eight percent. So um we don't know what the total enumerated rate is. The census doesn't provide us with that. So we're kind of flying in the dark a little bit there. But um we have been spending a lot of time um working to get those numbers up. And I do want to transition to say a big thank you to Tiffany White, who who gave that presentation to you earlier. Tiffany has kind of been our census lead staff person for for the better part of, I guess, getting close to two years now from when this originally began and has put in a lot of time and a lot of hard work. And and that work has been really well received by our city and county managers and our elected officials. So I want to recognize Tiffany for for her hard work on this and say a big thank you to her. And the last thing I'll mention is I want to say thank you to Samuel Bryan. Brian Wilson was off this week, so this was Samuel's first time kind of hosting one of the Zoom meetings. And and he did a really great job of getting everybody in and making sure they ran correctly. Thank you, Samuel. Good job. Um, and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
You have a future.
All right, thank you, Mr. King. Is there anything else for the good of the order?
Just one quick question. Um, our Mrs. Uh, Ms. McCray's orientation sessions open to other planning board members. I wouldn't mind getting reoriented and up to date on on the staff's thoughts on what a planning board member needs to know.
So so we did, um, we did, um, Mo came in and we did an orientation with her. Um, Clarence, as always, if you want to do something, I'm glad to help you. However, just reach out and and whatever you need, we will get it to you. Clarence, you feeling disoriented?
I'm always disoriented.
Clarence, I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to to cheat you. I did have a very great public-private session, you know, so I'm feel really sharp on this.
Well, I can tell you're really sharp. No question about that. I hope you're first.
Aaron did a great job.
First is great. I'm glad to hear that.
Well, thank you all again for a hundred percent attendance, Ms. Smith.
All right, we have a motion to a term.
Second.
Thank you. Have a great evening, everyone.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.